At this time, we will be called to order over. To the people of the heavens and the earth, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for another opportunity to come together to serve the citizens of Florence, South Carolina. We welcome you into this meeting this day that the decisions that we make will be for the best of this city, that the citizens that we have would also be the best neighbors we can to all those that surround us. We welcome you this day to please lead us and to guide us with all honesty and fairness of heart to do what is best for all. On that, please.
Ma'am. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will do their approval of our minutes from March 8th, 2021. Do you have a second? It has been moved to the problem of second that we receive the minutes from March 8th, 2021. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So at this time, I pronounce that we do have an addendum to our meeting. Please take a look, we have an addendum that would be a resolution number 2021-10, a resolution to proclaim March 25th, 2021 as Greek Independence Day.
I move that we adopt the resolution.
So it's been added to our agenda. Yes.
I move that we add it to the agenda. Excuse me.
So it's a proper motion and second that we add to our agenda of resolution number 2021-10. If there is no objection, we presently have Mr. Tassio on the line, and I'm going to ask that, did you listen up? We just got immediately adopted. This is the resolution that, well, we were having read afterwards, was in recognition for the Greek people's declaration of their independence. Do we have a motion that we received this resolution? Do we have a second? It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt resolution number 2021-10. And at this time, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Resolution number 2021 has been adopted, and I will return it over to Pro Tim to acknowledge.
Tassios. Okay, thank you. There he is. So make sure you can hear Mr. Tassio.
Mr. Tassio, correct. Mr. Tassio, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. You hear me?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes. At this time, I'll please to, my glasses are fogging up, so bear with me. This is a resolution on behalf of Greek Independence Day, and Jimmy Tassios is with us by Zoom, and we appreciate Jimmy Uris being here and bringing this matter to the attention of council. And so I will do my best to read this and try to pronounce all the Greek words correctly.
You're going to do fine.
So resolution 2021-10, whereas on March 25th, 1821, the people of Greece declared their independence and liberty from the Ottoman Empire, which had occupied Greece for nearly 400 years. And whereas on that day, Bishop Yamanos of Patras raised the Greek flag at the monastery of Aya Lavras, inciting the Peloponnesian people to rise against the Ottoman Empire. And whereas after many years of war, with the allied support of Great Britain, France, and Rome, the people of Greece won their independence from the Ottoman Empire on September 14th, 1829. Whereas with their newfound freedom, the Greek people began a migration to new homes all over the world, including the United States, the state of South Carolina, and the city of Florence. And whereas Greek immigrants and their families assimilated to their new homes in Florence, South Carolina, and began building businesses, serving in local civic clubs, and on boards and committees, serving in the US Armed Forces, starting the first chapter of the Evritarian Association of America, and building the Holy Transfiguration of our Savior Greek Orthodox Church. And whereas March 25th, 2021 is the bicentennial of Greece's independence from the rule of the Ottoman Empire. And now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Florence, South Carolina, does hereby proclaim March 25th, 2021 as Greek Independence Day in the city of Florence, and urges all the citizens to join in recognizing this day. Resolve this 12th day of April, 2021, approved as deformed by Jim Peterson, signed by Amanda Pope, municipal clerk, and Theresa Myers, urban as mayor. And if we can just take a moment and just offer congratulations to the Greek community. Jimmy, Jimmy Tassios is with us, who is a representative of the Greek community here in Florence, and we appreciate all of you and the entire Greek community here in Florence to do for our city. And if you have any words you'd like to offer at this time, we certainly love to hear from you.
On behalf of the local community here in Florence and in Darlington and surrounding communities, on behalf of our parish priest, Father Catherine Mott, on behalf of the president of the Evritarian Association, chapter number one, and also our president of our parish council and all the parish council members, we thank God for the city of Florence, South Carolina, and the opportunities that it provided for our families to come here and build their families and build their businesses and build their lives. Thank God for all of you that are on the parish, on the city council, and all the work that you do. And we also thank God for the past parish council, city council members and past city mayors, police chiefs, fire chiefs, all, everyone in public service that did everything to make the city the city that it is today. Thank you for all you do. We just thank you so much, and we want to wish all of God's blessings on all of you to continue doing, doing the great job.
We would like to thank you for being before us today and to you and all part of your public. We thank you for being a great part of the city of Florence, and also being able to verify that we as a city is a diverse but inclusive city. So thank you for being here today. It is a great honor to present this resolution. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you very much as well.
Now, Mayor, at this time, I raise a point of order. I'd like to address the question of the mayor pro temp matter. And in December, we had a vote on, we had the council meeting, and we did not have with us council members on Thursday. I'm sure, Madam Mayor, you'd like to address that.
Well, they're supposed to do that as part of all these ones, because that's not on the agenda.
Can't hear him very well. I'm in the dressing room, but I thought you were. Yes, ma'am, that's fine. So we have two new council members with us here, William Schofield and Brian Braddock. We welcome both of you as new council members here today. And at that time, we did not have council members. You two were not here, council districts, one and three were not, one and three were not represented. And it was raised by the two of you at that time that you'd like to have an opportunity for those districts to be represented. So the issue of whether or not that needs to come up, I would, I've had conversations with both Mr. Schofield and Mr. Braddock.
Well, at this time, we were not discussed at this time. You want to present that stuff. It's not on the agenda. We want to ask for it next month.
And so what I'm asking is for these council members to let us know if you would like to have it added to the agenda for next month. Certainly, I will be open to that, and it's up to each of you. I'd like to hear from you.
At this time, point of order, we will not do discussion. This item is not on this month's agenda, and we were looking at having it on next month's agenda. So there won't be a discussion right now. It's not been properly, the public has not been properly notified, so we can't discuss that this, this month.
Well, Madam Mayor, I'm not, we are not having a vote on it this month. That is correct. The question is the issue of whether or not they as council members who are now seated on this council would request that it be put on the agenda for next month, and I would just like to hear from them.
Well, we will not have full discussion. If you desire to have that placed on, you're welcome discussing with both council members outside of this meeting. And if you want to have it placed on next month's agenda, you may. But for proper legal notification, we did not notify the public, so we, you know, we don't want to do a discussion right now.
Understood. So in following up on that, yes, ma'am, following up on that, I'll have a conversation with the two of them, and then we'll see if they request that be put on the agenda. Thank you.
Thanks for your point of order.
Yes, ma'am.
And at this time, we proceed to go in before our appearance before council. I do want to acknowledge that this is the first time that is for council, plus Councilman Chauquay and Paul, who's zooming in, has been seated together. So before we proceed into our public hearing, to both councilmen, and you both came at the same time, so Councilman Schofield and also Councilman Braddock, welcome to your rightful position here to serve this of Florence. We're looking forward to working with you, and I believe the whole of the councils working, want to work together to do what's best for all of the citizens of Florence, and we all will have a part to play in that, as long as we put the city and citizens first. So welcome and thank you, and if, at this time, we will just proceed on. So if you have any questions, please give me a sign, and I will acknowledge you for any part of discussions that you want to have as we proceed on. So once again, thank you for offering your service, and thank you for serving this for the Florence. Thank you. At this time, we will proceed to our agenda as outlined, and first, we will have appearance before council. We have Mr. Erby Wilson, who is leading the coalition to speak to the council on sexual assault awareness and child abuse prevention month. Mr. Wilson? One more moment, we're getting Mr. Wilson keyed up here. Hello, Mr. Wilson, how are you doing? Can you hear me, Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson, can you hear me?
Yes, can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir, welcome. We're happy to have you at this time.
Good, thank you. Again, my name is Erby Wilson, I'm with the PD Coalition Board. First of all, let me thank you for the mayor and the council for all y'all doing to make this city such a great city. I hope I can say this, and welcome to the new city members and city council members as well. Please now, so on behalf of the PD Coalition Board, I would just like to thank y'all for y'all's past help. And moving forward, I continue seeking y'all's help to make this a PD Coalition a better place and a better program and organization. Let me say this, PD Coalition was started about 35 years ago. Ellen Hammond made the decision in 1986 to start PD Coalition about 35 years ago. So we actually celebrate now 35th anniversary this year, so I don't want to put in any place else. And APR is Child Abuse Prevention Month and Sexual Assault Awareness Month. So APR, all of APR, we will be child abuse prevention and sexual assault. So I will give you, I love to give you some statistics on where we at with this child abuse, like child abuses, report of child abuses, may, about every 10 seconds, there's a case made about every 10 seconds. Yellow reference to the state child protection service involve 6.6 million children, around 1.2 of the children are subject to investigation report. But all other perpetrators and someone, the child or the family members, as a member, as a, as a family member knows, as many as 93% of the victims under the age of 18 know they're abuser. That's alarming numbers. And for the sexual assault piece, approximately eight out of six, eight out of 10 sexual assault are committed by someone that the victim knows. Over 1.5 million women are raped by intimate partner in 2019 in the United States. Those are very alarming numbers. Around 20% of American males have been a victim of sexual violence. Women's or men's with disability face twice the risk of sexual assault with ability, with able-bodied individual. So the numbers are very alarming, so I just wanted to bring you to your attention, bring a little bit more awareness to the PD Coalition, and bring a little bit more awareness to the different programs that we have with the Coalition. So I'd just like to thank you for all that you do. I'm the first one to say that I wish there was no PD Coalition, but we do need a PD Coalition to move forward, so I would love to see if we continue to make a difference in this town, this community, this community, this city, this state, and this nation. So I continue to ask you for your port, and so thank y'all for all that you do for us and the PD Coalition.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wilson, for your report, and we have received all of your information. You entered the council, have any comments? Do we have, my first name is Tom.
I'll first to the lady.
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I want to know, Mr. Wilson, due to COVID, have y'all seen any increases in numbers of?
Yes. Yes, the impact of COVID, with the COVID kids, clothes out of school are, are results has increased. Really, the increase of the child abuse and the lack of outside supervision, people wouldn't, typically could be intervention, but the teachers and the, and the teaching was being placed ahead, but with kids being out of school and COVID in place, the numbers has risen.
What about the funding? Has any funding been available through the CARES Act or through any?
Yeah, there has been some, yeah, there has been some funding through the CARES Act, but they also, we received some cuts from the, the Victim of Crime Act also. So yes, we see some funding from the CARE Act, but there also been some cuts from the Victim of Crime Act also grants.
So here's Brad, I was the volunteer coordinator for PD Coalition. And you would be surprised at how many times you would have to go and ask for a police officer to go pick up a woman and get her out of a volatile situation. You'd be surprised how many times we'll call to emergency room in the middle of the night to sit with a sexually assaulted victim.
Absolutely.
PD Coalition has a lot on their plate. We have so many women and children out here being abused that we need to take, keep in mind that that's not right. Something needs to happen. We need to keep that on the forefront, because, and it's just, it says Florence counties and Williamsburg counties are all over South Carolina. It was very sad at the time, when I was going to, when they didn't have soap on, you had people, your people went off, you had to answer it and get to that hospital as fast as you can.
It's still there. It's actually still there, so.
So, and we did, we used to have, I mean, sexual assault awareness, what did they think was that October?
Yeah, the domestic violence is out in October.
And I had a big picture displayed with someone in a casket, and on it, it says, "He loved her to death," which means that he beat her to she was dead. So, Mr. Erby, I appreciate all your hard work, if you know. And I want everybody to keep in mind, we need to do whatever we can for PD Coalition. They have a safe house, and a lot of the victims go into the safe house, and they're not supposed to tell anybody where they are.
No, they don't supposed to tell.
There were times when, I guess, they stayed along enough, they really loved this man, even though he tried to beat him to death, and they give out their location, which makes it, which in turn puts everyone else in danger that's in that safe house. And then there's the house for children that's been abused. And I guess you all know where that one's at. I might not reveal the location of the safe house, because I want they're doing the Christmas holidays to drop off some things, but they take donations. PD Coalition, they're always looking for donations for victims in the safe house, clothes, bedding, whatever you can donate, food. So please, give whatever your heart tells you to do, because it's needed.
Appreciate that, miss.
Toilet trees for the children, I mean, you can do a teddy bear or something, you know, just to help them feel comfortable.
Yeah, and our shelter is actually, Ms. Gibson, actually, our shelter is actually full at this moment.
Okay, then you said your shelter's full, and that shouldn't be, that shouldn't have to, that shouldn't happen, it shouldn't be full, it shouldn't be anyone there. I don't know why people think they can just beat up on people and it's okay. I remember a woman that was running away from her husband, he was, he found out where she was in a motel on 52, I'm sorry, on TV Road, and she just left, I mean, she ran. Again, she couldn't stop running because he kept finding her. So please, please be aware that everyone is at stake, and everyone is at stake. We have a lot of children out there getting sexually assaulted and abused, and we have a lot of children also.
I'm determined to make a difference in this city.
I remember Camp Fever, that we used to have some years back, the girls camp, they started talking about sexual abuse, and one girl said, "I've been sexually molested in a foster home since I was three years old." And at the time, she was 14. From foster home to foster home, and she was being abused. So please, thank you, Erby, for all that you do. Just that if anyone has any donations they'd like to donate, call PD Coalition, and they'll pick them up, or you can take them to the mayor office.
All right, we'll take them all, and I'll come get them if I need to.
Well, Mr. Wilson, thank you so much for representing PD Coalition, and congratulations on 35 years of serving and protecting. As a student nurse, actually, crisis nurse, I did have the honor of going there to do some of my clinical services, and so I'm very familiar with this program. But once again, thank you for all that you do in PD Coalition for being a part of our city. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Mayor, thanks, council.
At this time, we will proceed on to our next item. For our appearance before council, we have Samantha Siegel, for the South Carolina Oceanic Representative, and she will speak to us through the council today in reference to single-use plastics. Siegel, can you hear me? Good afternoon.
I can. Thank you so much for having me. Are you, are you ready for me?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Welcome to our meeting today.
All right, I'm going to share my screen and give a brief presentation on single-use plastics. Can you all see my screen, okay?
Yes, we can, thank you.
All, all right, well, thank you so much. Good afternoon, thank you, Mayor, members of council, for the opportunity to talk to you today about single-use plastics in your city. My name is Samantha Siegel, I am the Oceana's Senior Southeast Field Representative based here in Charleston, South Carolina. So if you're not familiar with Oceana, we are an international advocacy organization dedicated to protecting the world's oceans. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about plastic pollution, and it's going to be a little depressing, but bear with me, because at the end, there will be a solution. So what is the problem? Plastic pollution is a growing threat, as I'm sure you all know, not only to the world's oceans, but also to our food, our climate, our health. Each year, an estimated 33 billion pounds, which is equal to 15 million metric tons of plastic, enters the marine environment. So this is roughly the equivalent to two garbage trucks full of garbage being dumped into the ocean every minute. So I want to clarify that we're talking about single-use plastics here. There are obviously some plastics that are completely necessary in the medical field and, and other fields. What we're talking today is just those items that you use once, and then they go in the trash can. So nearly 40% of all plastics are produced for packaging, most of which is used once and then thrown away. So that's profoundly flawed by design, because products like straws, plastic bags, and styrofoam are used, are made of something used to last forever, and they're only used once. So the plastic pollution is everywhere. It's in our oceans, it's melting in the Arctic sea ice, it's raining onto the Rocky Mountains, and it's even sitting at the deepest part of the ocean floor. So as plastic continues to flood our oceans and other waterways, the list of marine species affected by plastic debris expands. A piece of plastic can look like food to a fish, a turtle, marine mammal, or a bird as seen here. So we're seeing increasing reports of dead beached whales with bellies full of plastic debris. Tens of thousands of individual marine animals have also been observed suffering from entanglement or ingestion, and a lot of sea turtles here at the Charleston Aquarium, we see all the time. At least 17% of those species are listed as endangered, so not only are we hurting these animals, but we're contributing to the potential of extinction of some of them. So all of this is being, all this plastic pollution is being driven by a massive increase in plastic production, which is being fueled in part by new access to large amounts of natural gas from fracking, and this is feeding a similar increase in the production of single-use plastics. So everything from saltwater to beer has been found to contain plastic. Scientists are still studying how humans are affected, but it's not good. So while we realize the extent of plastic pollution's effects, plastic pollution continues to increase at a rapid rate. Global protection of plastic is now projected to increase at least fourfold between 2014 and 2050. So as plastic pollution production increases, so will the amount of plastic entering our communities and our oceans. So recycling is just not enough to solve the plastic crisis. Waste management solutions have not adequately dealt with plastic pollution in the past and not, and can't realistically keep up with the amount of plastic production. Only 9% of all the plastic waste ever produced has been recycled. That statistic astounded me. So the rest of it either ends up in incinerator, landfill, or the environment. So what can we do to help? Policies governing single-use plastics are the most effective way to stop the flow into our communities. This is not just a coastal, coastal issue, although you see lots of whales and dolphins, and it's, it's also an inland issue as well. So federally, the United States has so, has failed to implement a nationwide policy like multiple other countries have addressing this crisis. So in the US, cities and counties and states have actually been leading the way on stopping this. So I would urge you all to consider some sort of plastic reduction efforts, whether it be a single-use plastic ordinance similar to the one that 18 other South Carolina municipalities have passed, or there's other actions you can do, like creating a, a plastic-free zone in your city hall if you're just not ready to take the step on the ordinance. There's, there's lots of other things you can do, and you can contact me, and I can come up with great ideas. And last thing I want to share, and I'll give you the rest of your afternoon back, is that two of the places, Folly Beach and Mount Pleasant, we were able to collect data pre-ordinance and post-ordinance, and so in, since 2016, Folly Beach has seen a 63% reduction in plastic litter since their ordinance passed, and Mount Pleasant has seen a 69% reduction in litter. So these ordinances are really work. They're not just, you know, something to look good. uh, something to look good or sound environmentally friendly, they're actually really working. So, thank you again so much for the opportunity to address you today and I can send my testimony, um, to all of you along with my PowerPoint if you're interested in, in learning more.
Thank you so much for being before us today and if you saw the value, please part your PowerPoint. You can state either to our city clerk or you to our city manager. Council members have any questions or any statements? If not, thank you so much for being here with us today and please send us that information.
Thank you so much.
Next we have on our agenda here, our public hearing. The first item is a public hearing will be held to receive input on the video court. Do you block your actual fifty-year point three one days? We have a motion over here. If the public motion is second, it's time to review the decision.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and Member of Council. I am going to share. And, um, the CDVG, um, grant monies come to the city of Florence. They're allocated towards the city on an annual basis. Uh, they are, uh, meant to target, um, uh, the national objectives within, um, the CDVG area, uh, within the city of Florence. And the, the, to be eligible, um, under the current CDVG programming descriptions, um, certain national objectives have to be met. And, um, those are, uh, to benefit low and moderate income persons, so LMI areas, uh, to aid in prevention or elimination of small employment. And to meet a, a need having a particular urgency referred to as an urgent need. So, um, the funds, uh, have been historically allocated to, um, some of our rehab projects for homeowners within the city, um, towards down payment assistance, um, towards sub recipients within the city such as, um, Manor House, um, um, My Brother's Keeper and organizations such as that. So, um, and I'll, I'll go over, um, the current proposed budget, um, as well as, uh, the budget from last year because I know we have some new members of council, uh, who haven't been through this process before, so. Um, and for the general public as well because this is a public hearing. So, um, the proposed budget, um, this year, um, we have a total of two hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred dollars, um, which is based on a formula that, that HUD, um, prescribes for the various, um, recipients of this, uh, nationwide. And, um, so out of the entire pot of money nationally, the, the city qualifies for two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. Um, the allocations are, are, uh, broken up into various areas. Uh, this year, we're proposing, uh, for, uh, fifty-five thousand, three hundred to go into planning and administration. Uh, a hundred thousand to go into, uh, emergency rehabilitation. And, uh, thi- this number is, is up a little bit this year and I'll, I'll explain that, um, in a follow-up slide. Uh, we also have, um, the section one oh eight loan repayment, um, of sixty-nine thousand dollars this year. Uh, and that goes towards, that's the, uh, barn street renovations that we borrowed to get stuff several years ago. And I believe we have three more years left on this law, so, uh, we're getting close to the end of this. Um, we have forty thousand dollars set aside for, uh, down payment assistance for down payment assistance for homeowners within the CDVG area. And, uh, twenty-six thousand nine hundred proposed for demolition, uh, within these areas. So we did, and the down payment assistance portion of that is part of the public service. We're allowed, um, up to, I believe it's thirty percent of the funds to go towards that. So we, we tried to, to match that out there. So, um, we did hold a public hearing, a virtual public hearing on March the fourth, uh, to hear from the, the public. Uh, some of the comments we, we received, they were varied, um, such as creating community center or playground, um, on the south side of town. This is, this is outside of the CDVG area, but we included this. We, uh, such as continuation of, of removing blighted, blighted and abandoned properties in the city. If these funds are satisfied for renovations to leave Park Community Center. We are funding, um, renovations to leaving Park out, out of another fund. So this is gonna move forward, uh, without these funds, uh, litter, trash and debris pickup throughout the city, uh, continuation for home rehab and repairs, which, um, this money does include, uh, faster service for broken water mains and five storm drains. This is included in utility fund, um, drainage problems in Northwest Florence. Again, that's included in the, um, utility fund and we're also working, working towards acquiring some other grants, um, for, for repairs in this area. Uh, some sidewalk extensions, assistance for homeless, uh, and their vaccines, economic development training or incentives, addressing potholes and neighborhood lighting, uh, continuation of down payment assistance for home purchases and examination of water bill. So these are some of the, uh, this is some of the input that we received from, um, citizens. I believe we had about twelve individuals that called in that, um, even as, as well as a number of city staff that participated in that. Previous year, last year, um, the, the CDVG funding, um, had similar, um, categories, uh, you notice here that Lighthouse Ministries, Manor House, My Brother's Keeper and Salvation Army were all included in, in previous years, um, those are, that is part of the public service portion. And, um, that, um, they are considered sub recipients of that to carry on their program. Um, because of the CARES Act funding this year and, um, this is the total received for CARES Act funding through the, um, through, through the national government as part of COVID-nineteen response this year. Um, these, um, particular groups were funded through that, um, much more substantially than they would be under our normal funding. So, um, you know, uh, staff is suggesting, um, putting the monies that we normally, um, with, with under the, this year, under the normal funding, um, towards the, uh, down payment assistance, uh, this year. Uh, um, or, a- and or the, um, um, let me back up, and or the emergency rehab this year to, uh, to fund, um, rehabs and down payment assistance. So, um, like I said, the, these, uh, groups were funded quite substantially through the CARES Act funding this year and much more than they are typically here, so. And th- this concludes, um, staff's report. I know this is a public hearing, so, uh, I, I'm not sure if we've had anyone sign up. I don't believe we have, um, but, um, but it is a public hearing, so if you have any public comments.
No, we do not have anyone signed up. Chair recognizes, I'll send it back to some more.
Um, Mary.
Yes, ma'am.
The blind street facility and the youth center, baby park, at one point, a hundred thousand dollars is coming out each year?
For?
For those facilities?
But yeah, that's the, that's the loan that we're repaying. The such.
So that's the sixty, so we only owe sixty-nine thousand for the next year?
It was refin, the loan was refinanced, um, I believe, last year. So we typically owed a hundred and seven thousand towards that loan because, because it was refinanced. That amount went down to sixty-nine thousand.
And, and that will be done in three years for both of.
I believe, is that right, three years, or three?
Okay, that's not bad, if, so that would, that money will be.
That's right, then we can use that money other places, absolutely.
Okay, over the past years, the CDVG funding has gone down tremendously. I think at one point when we first started getting it, what was it, about six hundred thousand?
Yes, ma'am, we used to get in excess, uh, in the early nineties, uh, we were, late eighties, we're getting in excess of millions. Early nineties, we're at six, seven hundred thousand. And it's has, uh, gone down, although this is up from last year's numbers, those numbers have gone down substantially.
So now, do you expect over the next three, three years that it will go up or, or do it downward trend? I mean, just.
Over the last ten years, uh, each year, we've been told that it's gonna, the program will be cut out. Obviously with changes that in Congress and, and at the presidential level, uh, they'll make those determinations. But each year, we're told that this is our last year, uh, but that's been ten years at least. Uh, so we have no idea, whenever we got the increase this year, we're surprised that it actually increased a little bit.
Have they said that this year that, I mean?
I didn't speak for the listeners.
Uh, we, we haven't heard either way.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, Chair, we have any other questions? For clarification, I know in the past with planning and administration, that's been a line item, but we've always covered that so that money would not be utilized, has that changed?
Um, you wanna, just that was kind of y'all something, so.
I didn't hear your question.
In the past, that planning administration budget, budget, other than coming out that money, you've covered otherwise outside of that, has that changed?
No, ma'am, what we've done and, and that line item, the fifty-five thousand, three hundred dollars for planning and admin, uh, we are allowed twenty percent, uh, uh, for, for planning and admin, twenty percent of the two ninety-one, two hundred. That money is then taken, uh, although we can use it for planning and admin purposes, uh, we will take that fifty-five, three hundred and put it in neighborhood redevelopment. We've been doing that for several years now, and the direction of council will continue.
Thank you, I just want to be clear that it's gonna continue.
I thought that was the case, but I wanted to make sure.
All right. All right, well, council, we have received the proposed, um, budget for the community development block grant. What is your position, any further discussion? If not, are you ready for the question? And we have a mo.
And we'll bring, we'll bring the actual, uh, resolution before council next month, so.
James, we go ahead, we need to vote on it. So we won't have to vote in next month. All right, thank, thank you, Mr. Decker. But this time, we will proceed to. Our first meeting begins, our first meeting is Bill number twenty-two-one dash zero six, and it is a second reading. It's an artist to replace the existing emergency ordinance, number twenty-two-one dash zero seven, and to extend emergency measures put in place previously by the emergency ordinance, number twenty-twenty dash twenty-eight, which consolidates the emergency ordinance, number twenty-twenty dash twelve, twenty-twenty dash thirteen, and twenty-twenty dash twenty, in response to the COVID-nineteen emergency.
That's a move.
Second.
Here's the proper motion, it's second that we adopt the, the bill. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, like sign. Let the record reflect that we adopted Bill number twenty-two-one dash zero six. Our next.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. For the public, can you explain what that means? Because a lot of public now thinks because of what the governor said that.
This artist continued to reinforce the use of our masks here in the city of Florence in in our public spaces and as well with acknowledgement and the support of businesses that we continue to wear our masks in response to COVID-nineteen. Also, we do ask that you continue to follow your safe distancing as well and washing your hands, but this is our mask order. So publicly aware that we will continue to be cordial and wear our masks to protect each other from each other. So that is what that resolution that Bill just did proclaimed that we will continue to wear our masks here in city of Florence. And for those of you who consistently do this, we thank you for your part in keeping that decrease COVID-nineteen. Thank you so much. Um, we have a comment?
When does, when does this expire, this new ordinance?
We can let to actually do that or actually if something comes out from the governor, we can respond back. But right now, as a city, we are authorized and we want to keep this.
On a month, the month, or?
No, this is until, to further notification, this is what we will serve on, to further notification. And at any time this was to be lifted or changed, we would notify the public that this time, this is ongoing. But this time, we proceed on to Bill number twenty-two-one dash zero seven for a second reading. It's an ordinance to annex into zone parcel located at fifteen forty-one Polymer Parkway, identified as Florence County Tech Map Parcel Number nine zero one one three dash zero one dash zero six seven. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have the motion is second that we adopt Bill number twenty-two-one dash zero seven. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor, aye?
All right.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Let the record reflect that Bill number twenty-two-one dash zero second, S seven, S pass. Our next bill is Bill number twenty-two-one dash zero nine for a second reading. An artist to resolve the parcel located at six oh seven South Second Loop Road, identified as Florence County Tech Map Parcel, nine zero zero seven nine dash zero three dash zero zero eight. Can I have a motion? We have a second, I'll take as the motion in second from Councilwoman, um, Barnes and Councilman Schofield. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor? All those opposed, like sign. Let the record reflect that Bill number twenty-two-one dash zero nine has passed a second reading. Next, we will have introduction of ordinance. But also I would like to reflect that Bill number twenty-two-one dash zero eight is up for a first reading. It's an artist to resolve three parcels located at nine hundred Oakland Avenue and six oh seven Maxwell Street identified as Florence County Tech Map Parcell Number nine zero one one four dash one three dash zero zero one, common nine zero one one four dash thirteen dash zero zero two and nine zero one one four dash one three dash zero one three. And we will be discussing this in executive session. So our next item that we have is Bill number twenty-two-one dash one zero four first read. It's an art to extend the budget for the city of Florence for this fiscal year of year beginning at July the first, twenty twenty, and ending June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Do they have a motion that you fear from Mr. Yopon? Do we have, we have a motion, do we have a second? Is the problem, the motion is second, we are here from Mr. Yopon.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, before you, this afternoon is Bill number twenty-two-one dash ten. What this has to do with, there were several projects in last fiscal year's budget in the Water and Sewer Construction Fund that were not completed and those projects, so therefore, any available funding went into unappropriated reserves. And so therefore, it steps desire to pull those funds back out of under appropriated reserves this fiscal year and to do additional work on the projects this year.
Do we have any questions for, for Mr. Yopon? Okay, if we have no questions, do we have, um, we have a motion, all those ready to question, ready to question? All those in favor, say aye. Like that. Let the record reflect that Bill number twenty-two-one dash ten has been adopted. Next, we have introduction of resolution, the first resolution is Resolution Number twenty-two-one zero eight, a resolution to designate April as Fair Housing Month. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion in a second and we will now hear from Mr. Dayton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you stated, uh, we'd like to offer for a resolution, April is Fair Housing Month in the city of Florence. Uh, this is a long time proclamation that we requested. Uh, the city has been diligent in ensuring that all citizens are treated fair and equitable relative to housing. Uh, we've worked with a number of agencies, including the Board of Realtors. Uh, we've done training for the Realtors in the past and training for landlords and tenants. Uh, and again, uh, on behalf of the staff, we ask that you sign this resolution as you've done and ensure that all citizens understand that Florence recognized April as Fair Housing.
Do you have any questions or discussion for Mr. Dayton? Here, thank you, Mr. Dayton. If the motion is second, you're ready for the question? All those in favor, please say aye. Like sign, let it reflect that Resolution Number twenty-two-one dash zero eight, recognizing April as Fair Housing Month has been adopted. Next, we have Resolution Number twenty-two-one dash zero nine, a resolution to amend the conditional grant and development agreement dated November twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen between the city of Florence and ASP Investment and Hold the LLC. This resolution item will be discussed in executive session. And next we, next we have report to the council appointments to boards and commissioners. This time, we have motion that we hear from Mr. Davis. We'll give him a motion, give him today.
Oh, it's not moving.
Thank you, I'm worse than. We're here for Mr. Davis at this time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, we do have one appointment to boards and commission. Uh, there's a vacant on the housing authority. Uh, this position uh was vacated uh by Miss Myers, uh Miss Angela Myers. This appointment does fall to the mayor. This is a resident of the housing authority, not the commissioner himself. Uh, and then we we do have Miss Redding, and you have the application, I should have the application in your pack. And then and the housing authority did send a letter of recommendation for Miss Redding.
If there are no objections, I will appoint Ms. Del Shana Redding. There's no objection. Hearing none, Miss Redding has been appointed. That's all the board's. Thank you. At this time, we can get ready to have a motion, we're prepared to go into executive session. At which time, we will discuss the matters relating to a proposed economic development project thirty dash four dash seven eight five. Second item will be to obtain legal advice regarding resorting of the nine hundred block of Open Avenue and six oh seven Maxwell Street, thirty dash four dash seven eight two. Do we have a motion?
Seven.
Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a motion in second, all of them. Oh, in opposition, like sign, we proceed one. We like welcome everyone back. We are now coming out from the executive session, at which time we address items, well, there was no vote or no action taken. The items that we would address was as follows, uh was item A, discussion of a matter relating to a proposed economic development project thirty dash four dash seventy eight five, and then also item B, to obtain legal advice regarding the resorting of nine hundred block of Open Avenue and six oh seven Maxwell Street, thirty dash four dash seven eight two. So at this time, if there's no objection, we will address item A, which is discussion of matters related to a proposed economic development project thirty dash four dash seven eight five. Do we have a motion?
Yes, ma'am, at this time, I make motion to adopt the resolution for the conditional uh grant and development agreement uh for the project uh that was discussed.
If there are probably if not a question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In a poll, like sign. Let it reflect that I remember the development project. Next item, we have.
I'm sorry, just just so everybody, everybody's clear, uh who may be watching. Could could you just state for the record that that approval was Resolution number twenty twenty-one oh nine?
That was Resolution number twenty twenty-one oh nine?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that was, yes, the Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash oh nine, a res- a resolution to amend a conditional grant and development agreement dated November the twenty fifth, twenty nineteen between the city of Florence and A S P Investment and Holdin LLC.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
And then next we have item is to obtain, obtain legal advice about resorting of nine hundred block of Open Avenue, and that particular item was actually Bill number twenty twenty-one dash zero eight, and it was ordered to rezon three parcels located at nine hundred Open Avenue and six oh seven Maxwell Street identified as Florence County Text Map Parcel Number nine zero one one four dash one three dash zero zero one, and nine zero one one four dash one three dash zero zero two, and nine zero one one four dash one three dash zero one three. And uh before we, we can go ahead and have, um, we have so, we have a caller who wants to speak in reference to this, and the call is Mr. Patel. Mr. Patel, are you on the line? Mr. Patel, can you hear me? Mr. Patel, can you hear me?
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Patel, we have the floor. Mr. Patel, can you hear me? And to our public um audience, right now, we're um giving Mr. Patel a call. I think he might be having some technical issues here. Hello, can you hear us?
Yes.
Hi, how are you doing? Welcome to today's meeting. I believe that y'all want to speak on today's item, in reference to Open Avenue and Maxwell, resorting, correct?
Yes.
You're welcome, the floor is yours.
Sure, um, I know the council was spending time understanding from the lawyers kind of what the um, what the potential ways to restrict the use of the property um beyond perhaps our ownership of the property. And I'm not sure what the outcome of outcome there is, but you know, our, you know, as we reiterated last month, I just wanted to say, you know, our intent is to use the property for um a convenience store setting, kind of what it is today. Um, you know, we, our our goal is to to simply um tear down the building and just build built another one with the same things inside, you know, which is um groceries and 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 alcohol and tobacco, and you know, that 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 our goal is to not turn this into a into a private club, which I know is a concern for um for members of the community, as well as members of the council. Um, and you know, as we mentioned last time, we're more than happy to sign an agreement or whatever that says, hey, this is what um, you know, will be the use of the property going forward. And, you know, we can hold um future owners of the property to that as well. But you know, we're willing to go on the record and say, hey, this is strictly what that property will be used for. And, you know, we believe that right now, the that the way the property is laid out, um one, it's a little bit of an eyesore, uh because it is a dated building. Um, it's not as efficient uh from just from an ownership perspective, because it's old, the plumbing, the electrical, there is everything, it's it's a little bit dated. Uh, and I think the the biggest thing is the parking situation right now. Um, you know, our goal is to kind of push that building back, you know. Obviously, newer building will be a better looking building and and have some better parking um situation there that's a little bit safer for folks to get in and out. Um, and also just provide a a better, you know, uh a a better place and a safer place for people to shop.
Mr. Patel, um, thank you for the affirmation. I do want to assure you that as the mayor and council, we're in generous discussions because we do want to see investment made throughout the city of Florence, and we will entrust that you are a man of integrity with great, a great desire to improve the property, and know that we are in discussions and we do want to work with you, as well as all future business despite that might be in the community, to make sure that end product is a product that is not only productive for you, but also productive for the community which they go in. So I'm, we like to thank you first of all for being patient, as we have had to work through this through this process. So thank you first of all, and we are looking forward to working with you to see how we can make this come along to serve you, but also to serve the community that you design to have your business in. So know that we are doing our best to make sure that we can create an atmosphere that's good for you as well as all for all of the communities of Florence. So I do want to assure you of that, and thank you again for being so patient.
First of all, thank you.
So if there's any questions that our council members, and if council members have any question or any statement. If not, we would like to thank you for that, and we will, our city manager, or either someone else, my management, will definitely be back in contact with you. But rest assured, we are working on it diligently, so we do want a good product for you and for the community.
Okay, thank you.
So much. And at this time, we have, do we have any a motion in reference to this item number?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Uh, I'd like to move that, as I understand, first off, reiterating what you said, we certainly appreciate the interest in investing in of these uh areas that are historically diverse. And so I think that's something that is critically important that we all agree on. Uh, but we want to make sure, I think, as a council, that we're doing it in such a way that it is taken care of and addressed comprehensively all the way across the whole city. So in that regard, I would make a motion that this matter be referred back to staff to look at the designation under the U D O, the Unfor Development Ordinance, to see the conditions and the conditional uh granting of this commercial zoning uh at uh designation, and whether or not there's an opportunity to further refine that designation so as to meet the objectives of the city, as well as the objectives of uh the investor uh of of that property, the owner of that property, not only in that location, the open avenue Maxwell Street location, but also all across the board, because whatever designation we give, whatever challenges we may, need to be uniform and apply all the way across the board, and we want to make sure that we do that in a comprehensive way. So that's my motion that we refer back to uh staff for further evaluation and to come back with a recommendation as far as any modifications on the U D O.
So we have a motion to send this item back to staff to review for any changes or modification that can be done on the U D O to address the concept.
Yes.
We have a second. Okay, it's the proper motion in second. Are you ready for a question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In opposed, like sign. Let it reflect that the motion has passed. As back to staff and planning for further review. Do we have any other questions that concern the board prepared? Is there are no objections? Can we entertain a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All of the favors that I. We being opposed, you stand as heard.